To call to order today's Dr. P. School Board Regular Business Meeting for Monday, October 22nd, 2018. Sarah, would you please take the role?
Armin.
Yes, ma'am.
Helen.
Here.
Hoss.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
Thanks, Mom.
Good evening. Move on to item number two, which is Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to item number three. We are Dr. P. Schools Good News Items. I'm going to turn the floor over to your superintendent.
Okay, so I want to share just some good news about things that have been happening over a number of years. We have three-ish board members that won't be here. This is their, really their last official meeting of not being lame ducks, I would say, three of them, for sure, right? And so I think there's been a, I think we focus on what's been challenging over the last few years and sometimes forget about all the accomplishments that have happened. And so with the help of Ashley and team, they've pulled together kind of some big, I'd say big rocks that were accomplished under the majority of this board. So we're going to take a quick look at that, which will lead into a couple of other really current event good news items around the high school project and its completion, and then our final Academy Champion Entrust Data Card. So we'll look at this quick, and then we'll roll into really kind of current events of good news as well, so. So one of the things as we look through these to remember is that the board really oversees what's happening in the district. Our teachers and staff and so many people have contributed to what's happening, but kind of all under the leadership or governance of this board. So our teachers and staff work together to provide quality, inclusive education for all of our students, and we develop students for success and strive for excellence inside the classroom. So some of the things that we've done with this board here is we added Abbott programming, and I know they've been here and presented before. And Abbott is a program that really helps kids change their mindset around having a future plan, going to college. You'll see some of this, that last year, I think, that the kids at Abbott earned over a million dollars in college scholarships. That program was started while this board was in place. Our full day kindergarten programming, which impacts hundreds and hundreds of kids, and that's now been going on for, I think this is our fourth or fifth year of that, starting with this board as well. The addition of an equity team, and normally they were kind enough to let me sit in on the picture this time, but you can see that has been brought in. So much technology. If you were here just a few years ago and see what's actually happened in our district from a one-to-one, and infrastructure, both with iPads and MacBooks for our students, all happened with this board. This is just another. Our teachers as well. The Vaught Field Project, which you walk out there for a game on a Wednesday, this most recently, or Friday night, it's just fantastic. Very unique about this too is I think it's one of the few 10-lane tracks that you'll see as well, so it really gives them a lot of flexibility too. We added a young scholars program, which is kind of a, it's not exactly the same, but a young students' version of Abbott, where kids really start to see themselves as students, and they start to think about what their future could look like, and it's very, very inspirational for kids that are in that program. This Saber Nation Station, which if you've been through the high school, you've seen that, and then there's, and then yeah, they added a branch office, I guess you'd say, at Tocata, and if you're not familiar with this, it is a, it's a free store, basically. And there's really good stuff in there, and it's managing if a kid has needs, they just go and get stuff. I was actually in there last week, and somebody who was new to the school came in and wanted, said, "Well, how much is this stuff?" And it was free, and it was, "Take what you need." It was very cool. It was a very, very cool thing for our kids. Just recently this year, and this is a huge, huge undertaking as well, is switching from a 9-12, or a 10-12 high school to a 9-12, and then converting to middle schools. So we have East and West serving our middle schools, and then of course, where you guys are sitting today, that meant having a 9-12 high school, and we'll hear more about that as this meeting goes on. Part of that, and this happens in all our buildings, through some of our instructional coaching as well, which would be another program that is part of this. But this high school and the academies really lends itself to creating smaller learning communities within our big school, also under the governance of this board. So it's really big accomplishments. We've taken a lot of ink, printed about our financial situation, and we would like this to get some ink as well, that we're really trying to turn the corner on what's been happening with our fund balance and our revenue versus expenses each year. And so preliminarily, there was initially, we were looking at less than $50,000 being added to our fund balance this year, and as of the printing of this slide, it was closer to $900,000 or $950,000, and it's even going to be, is Jeff, where'd he go? Jeff is still here. It's going to be a, most likely, have to, bigger than that even. So some really nice things. This one that hasn't been so nice is turning a corner. And then really just want to thank this group that will be different going forward in just a few months for helping us. So thank you. Thank you, guys. So let's keep them ahead of this board. And as long as I'm going, I'll keep here. So we're going to lead into two, I think, really good news items that we're alluding to in here, and that is, we have a mock-up of the final plaque, is that what you called it? We want to do a picture around that?
Sure.
And then we'll have the good news item, our seventh Academy Champion Entrust Data Card. We'll do their ceremony as well. So Ashley, you want these guys to go? I know it's not the official one, but do you want a picture around that?
Yeah, show them your presentation.
Okay. So this means you guys get up.
(laughing)
No. Never. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that, Dave. Thank you, Ashley, and Sarah for putting that slide together. Tripped down memory lane, very nice. Move on to item number four, Consideration of the Agenda as Presented with Additions. And there are some additions. I'd like to call your attention to 5.1.7, Approval of Assignment Change. That is what we added. That is in your board addendum. And we are actually going to move items 7.4, which is a human resources related item, having to do with service employees. We're going to go ahead and pull that and postpone that for a later meeting. I would also like to wrap up items 7.2 and 7.1 under Old Business Action Items. I'd like to actually bring those two items up to the front here right after consent. And any other changes, Sarah?
Got it.
All right, if we can follow that, we're all being good here. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the changes.
Second.
Tony and Matt, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and that motion carries. All right, move on to item five, which is Consent Items. Entertain a motion to approve consent as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Matt and Reggie, any additional discussion? There are none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Now we'll go ahead and move up item 7.2. We'll start with that, and that is Entrust Data Card. And I'd like to invite Ed Cox to come on up and introduce us to our seventh Academy Champion.
Thank you. Just quickly, I'll introduce our seventh Academy Champion. We're very excited to have Entrust Data Card in partnership. They are going to be the Academy Champion for the Science and Technology Academy. Just brief background on our discussion and partnership with them. Entrust Data Card started into the conversation, I believe, from a chamber meeting, right there? From a chamber meeting, and as we went into conversation, it became very clear that it was an obvious partnership. When we look at the Science and Technology Academy, we have a strong focus on computer science, all things energy, electronics, communications related, and when you look at the work that Entrust Data Card does around trusted identities and secure transactions, it was a great fit. We had the fun of going over there last Wednesday. All of our teachers went to an Academy Champion on Wednesday during our Professional Learning Day, and it was a great opportunity to really see what each of the Academy Champions was all about. I was able to go to Entrust Data Card, and we were discussing briefly before the meeting, as educators, we live in a very broad plane of existence that's very thin by and large. You know, we're trying to introduce kids to a lot of different areas, get them exposed, but even what we consider to be deep exposure is fairly, fairly light. And to see them work in a very specific area and go deep in problem solving and coming up with solutions, and just looking at some really great opportunities for our kids and for our staff. So I'm just really excited to bring forward Jeff Smolinski, who's the Senior Vice President of Operations, and Heather Morris, who is the Director of Global Communications, and just say thank you to them. Thank you for the opportunity for our teachers and our students to be able to partner with them in all of the future things that are going to happen through that partnership, because we're just getting started.
Any comments you folks would like to make?
Sure.
(laughing)
Yeah, the communication probably cut off, so. The only thing I'll just say to Ed was
we appreciate the opportunity. We did, this was a chamber discussion, just as a sidebar for Albo, turned out to be this larger project. We met the teachers last week. It was as much fun for us as I think it was for them. As we spoke to the teachers, we see this as a journey, not an event. And so as they all were trying to define, what are we going to get done and so on, who knows? You know, two years from now, it'll be much greater than what it is today. Three, four years down the road, it'll be much, much more. We think we have a lot to offer the school. We're not going to specifically talk here of what we do, but we do some really cool stuff, and I think the teachers got to see some really cool stuff. And I think the children and the students, as they get a chance to come and have some exposure, we have exposure to them. I think the opportunities for what they could do, point four, whether it's in the kind of things we do or things related, will be quite, quite nice. We're looking forward to it.
Yeah, and I think for us, it's really important to be very engaged in the communities in which we live and work. We have a lot of employees who live in the area, and a lot of employees who are really, really interested in getting back to our communities. So this was a natural fit for us, to be able to work with the school district and have this partnership. And I think even beyond the Science and Technology Academy, we'll be able to offer a lot of great opportunities for the students, for the teachers, and for the district.
Thank you.
Where's the floor? Seth?
Angela's coming.
Uh-oh, this way.
Ashley.
Anybody else? You guys, anybody joining?
Scott, Amy, dear.
know, somebody could say that a seven-piece puzzle is a very easy thing to put together, but it took a while to get seven pieces, and you complete the picture. You really, really do. Now we are, now we are a fully made, fully realized academy structure, so thank you for being here, giving a picture for us. Thank you.
Great.
We do need to make a formal motion. Hold on, before you go, Heather, before you go, we have to actually, we, I got so excited the last time it is, we didn't approve anything. So I would like to, the recommended action on the table is to approve Entrust Data Card as the Academy of Science and Technology Academy Champion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, let's have Director Gray come on up, and we're going to talk about the superintendent's contract for Dr. Mike Redman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the contract that you have before you is really a template of Gary's contract, the last contract that you approved a couple of months ago. Sickly Vacation 403B will mirror Gary's contract. Significant variance from Gary's contract is, of course, adding a third year. That was a two-year contract. We've added a third year, and that was $197,000, which was similar to the increase from 189 to 193 to 197. So that was consistent. Also because Mike Redman is moving from quite a distance away, he had requested a moving expenses, so we have a max on this contract of one-time max of $9,000. That doesn't mean it's going to be $9,000. That's the maximum. He will be providing expense reports for that, or receipts. And then the other variant would be, he's worked out with his former district to work half-time from November 1st to December 31st, and then beyond that, he'll be full-time on January 1st. So some of the contracts you'll see, we have some half-time, half-time benefits, and half-time accruals that are related to the partial year worked. Any other questions about it?
Can you tell me what that December date was again?
The last day in December.
The 31st.
Yeah. I had to pause to think about whether it was 31 or...
Keith, there was some talk that it could be sooner. Are we just kind of saying that it's going to be a couple of months of part-time January?
I think we still don't know. I think what Mike was saying was that if they found, you know, depending on how they found a replacement, you know, how that transition went, he might come here earlier. But right now, he said, "Let's just play it like it's going to be half-time for that period of time." So I don't know that that's anywhere near today for him.
And just so everybody knows, from a PTO ready vacation or sick time approval, we're going to run that through the system that we're using right now, so all of that will ultimately go to board chairs at the time.
Right. We have a, we have a time and attendance system, and the board chair would be the person signing up on that time and attendance for this year.
Questions for Keith?
Not a question, but I have a comment. Thank you, Keith. Since there, you've done a lot of heavy lifting. You and Dave were heavily involved in the search, and you've been the point person in negotiations for this contract. I know that was something you weren't expecting to spend late August, all of September, and now most of October, searching for and finding and signing a new superintendent. So thank you for doing that on top of your already full schedule of your normal duties. So I just wanted to say thank you for all of the expertise that you brought to this process.
Other comments?
Good job.
All right, hearing nothing else, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the superintendent contract with Dr. Mike Redman as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And then Tony, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go back up to item six, Old Business Discussion Items. I'd like to invite Jeff Priest up to give us the monthly budget. Get moved up.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jeff.
Sue, are you going to bring that?
I am.
Well, I can start off. So what I want to provide, I think we talked at the last meeting, and the reporting sequence throughout the year. So this would be a report for the end, looking at the general fund.
Everybody see this?
So it provides a kind of operational update for the current year. And I am going to go back and talk about the prior year as well. But look at the part that's in green, so that's the adopted budget for, for the current year. We break down the different, the significant funding categories. Total adopted budget of $99.2 million. And then looking at our significant object, object series expenditures, $97.4 is expected. That's the adopted. So revenues, over expenditures, nice surplus there, $1.8 million expected surplus. Then we, then we just go out and show year-to-date received in 19, so that's in the first three months, first quarter of our fiscal year. And you can see, we haven't received a lot of federal dollars at this point in time, or any property tax dollars, but the tax, local tax levy dollars start to flow in October, and then you can see another $539,000 local fees and interest that we've received. But probably, I think what's important here is looking at, especially when you're in this, you're looking at September, not a lot of activity. But I think you look at, so we put the 9/30/17, 9/30/2016, so two previous fiscal years, and we, at that point, 1% of the revenue had we received, 1% of expenditures had, had we expended. And then we just do those comparison percentages. So, you know, when you look at the state, 19.34, if you're close to your enrollment numbers, those are just going to flow through the metered state payment system. So that's pretty consistent year-to-year. Federal dollars again, up until a little bit later in the year, property taxes will roll in, starting in October. But I'll jump down to, and then I've got another sheet that kind of shows some of the, what happens in the current year. But looking at salaries and wages, I think some people can say, "Oh, you're in the first quarter. You're doing really good if you only spent 14% of your salaries and wages." But that's because we're a school district, and we start paying a lot of our teacher group, don't really start getting paid until we get into audit. So I think what we see here at this time is probably three of 26 payrolls for our largest, our largest group. So that 14, we should be at around that 14%. And look at, at 2016, when we overspent budget a little bit, we were 15.14. So I'd say for now, we're, as we're, you know, into the game here, three months, there isn't anything, put these percents here to say, is there any significant budget variance that we see coming? And at this point in time, I would say definitely not. So then I just want to jump back to the second column, and that's the...
Can you keep it there for a couple minutes?
All right. So looking at preliminary audit numbers, and I still call this preliminary audit, because we haven't finalized the district's audit, but we are pretty far along, and the auditor's will be here next week to wrap things up. Looking at total revenues, 95.1, total expenditures, 93.4. So we have revenue over expenditures of 1.6. So I think we ended up very well compared to, I think, our budget. We were, we weren't, we were projecting about a $36,000 surplus. So we're adding back some fund balance, which we know that we need to do. And then looking at, so I call that down there, I call it the UFRS compliance, and I do that because when we get to a certain point in the fiscal year with our audit, we upload our information to the state. And so we wake up, we think we're pretty close on audit numbers to do that. And so this is where we're sitting right now. You can see the non-spendable fund balance, $212,000, down through the on sign, 1.9. So total fund balance of 2.7. And then if we look at the projected surplus for 19, you can see that our, if we meet that 1.8, that we've got a budget, total fund balance could be up to 4.5. So we want to start building back fund balance. Looks like we're making some good headway in doing that. And then, Sue, if you could just put that under...
Actually, quick, Jeff, can you, sorry, Sarah, can you go back? Can you explain the $1.1 million projected increase in the restricted kind of...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I should do that. So that is, there's a sale of some property that's expected to take place. I think right now, the closing is scheduled for mid-April. So that is built in. So the restricted fund balance is in our capital outlay fund. So those dollars would go right into that, right into that fund. So, yeah. Okay, then Sue, the next little sheet, I'll just quickly run through. So this will just talk about, you know, what are, what are some of the, these are all pretty positive changes, but some of the significant items. So if you look at, so preliminary audit, I'm still talking about the June 30, 2018 preliminary audit numbers. Actual enrollment for 1718 school year was at 99.7% of projected enrollment. So when you're that, that close on enrollment, you know that your, your state aids are going to follow budget, because so much of our state aid is generated by the number of people in it. So revenues came up, preliminary audit revenue exceeds budget projection by $178,000. So the revenue budget variance is almost two, two-tenths of 1%. So that's pretty close, you know, budget to actual. Then on the expenditure side, we had built in some contingencies on, on staffing side of things, so salaries and benefits. We actually had, I think, contingencies totaling $600,000, and there were some other positive adjustments. So that's a positive budget variance of $840,000. Budget for certain capital expenditures, so that's in the restricted fund we're just talking about. Some textbook dollars, software support, equipment, et cetera. Dollars not spent, and provided a surplus of another $391,000. And then budget for purchase services, and purchase services are a ton of things. Utilities, expenses for audits, transportation, and so on. But there was a budget revision that was made last, so it says January budget revision, not required. We made a budget revision, thinking transportation costs were going to be higher than they actually were. I think that revision was about $500,000. So didn't need to do that. We did, so that reflects, that's reflected here with a surplus in that category, $156,000. And then just in the current year, I think I talked about the state aid payments are aligned with current enrollment projections, follow the cash flow, so we'll... And then, just in the current year, I think I talked about the, um, state aid payments are aligned with current enrollment projections, follow the cash flow, so we'll see those percents obviously go up through the year. Uh, local tax revenue will start in October, and then I'm just making a comment on, uh, when you see that fourteen percent, uh, salaries and benefits, why isn't that twenty-five percent? Because we're twenty-six pay period, a lot of people start in August, get paid off at the end of the year, so. Um, I think that's about it, we'll come back in October with some more updated numbers in November. Thank you all for that.
Jeff, you said four hundred and fifty-six thousand, uh, obviously that's very good news. If, Sheriff, we can flip back to the other, back to the other side? I noticed that that was, the purchase services were only at nine point four, whereas previously we've been, you know, eleven or twelve percent.
Yeah.
Do we project another savings there, or is that just a timing?
Yeah, I think that, um, and we're talking about that a little bit in the board finance group earlier. Uh, I'll come back to budget revisions in, I think, December, January, and yeah, we'll probably be making some changes, I think there'll be positive, let's see, some posi- positive changes to the adopted budget.
Is it fair to say, Jeff, we could say aloud that the preliminary budget would suggest that we might end twenty nineteen at a four and a half percent unbalance?
That's what we're saying right now, yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, and I, I mean, yeah, I, I say that with a lot of confidence, that maybe even a little bit better.
That's really important, because, uh, one year does not make a trend, two years just starts to cause a little bit of a gap, so this is a really, really good traction. Alright, any other questions for, uh, for Jeff?
No, just simply say thank you for your excellent work, I know a lot of this started, you know, previous to, to your joining, but I think you've done a great job of...
There's a lot of work done before I got here, for sure.
Thank you for all your expertise.
You bet.
We'll be too far.
We got, that's right.
Standing enrollment. Actually, you know, my...
So, yeah, we can both avoid that number. So I think we, we're used to seeing this, I think, just in this format, you can see the details on the left, the kind of roll up on the right, scroll up, upper right. And you can see the blue is what we projected for this year, uh, to the right of that is what was sitting on October first, and then the plus minus. And so it looks like, you know, across our elementary, we're down a little bit, and across our secondary, except for one, you can look at ninth grade, we are up the net at the bottom. You see we're down a hundred and fifteen K five from what was projected, uh, one at the middle level, and up seventy-eight at the high school level. So a net of minus thirty-six kids from what was projected, but I think this is why Jeff will be helpful. From a funding perspective, the secondary kids starting at sixth grade, right, are generating funding at one point two times the, for seventh grade?
Yeah.
Seventh grade and up. So, if you're gonna be swinging one way, you wanna swing this way, because you're getting more credits. So I think Jeff probably does his budgeting off of what's called weighted average daily membership, or WOTM. And so having it this way, we're probably above projected in WOTM, is that even though the enrollment is down a little for what we're...
Yeah, we're, we're actually, um, so the number that, that I use when we were taking that total WOTM, applying that to all our funding formula, so that number was nine thousand one hundred and twenty. Um, so that's a, what we're looking at there is the seat count, then we apply, um, there's, there's some PSEO students, there's some tuition, there's early childhood special ed. Um, so we have all those components to try to get to that ninety-one twenty. Uh, so I'm taking that at ten seventeen actual, uh, I think on the enrollment count, we're about twenty down. Um, but then, there's another piece of it, and that's our extended time, and so we budgeted, I think our budget number is sixty-four. And that number looks like, you know, you really don't know till you get to the end of the year, but historically, we've been at an eighty-five to ninety kind of number. So we did kinda, we use a conservative number on, on the extended time, but if, if you factor that back in, we get pretty darn close to it. We'll, we'll come pretty close to it in that nine thousand plus.
So, you budgeted at ninety-one hundred and twenty or something, I think?
Yeah, yup, it's ninety-one twenty.
And you right now think it's just, it's very close to that?
Yeah, yeah, I think we're within four or five, probably, so that's pretty close.
Great, great job on that, I guess not specific to finances, I'm strangely a little heartened by the Eagle Creek and Jackson totals, because they're, you know, pretty far above capacity, and what we're seeing is they're actually getting some relief this year from the overcrowding. Uh, fifty kids down at Eagle Creek is some nice elbow room in the school.
Two classrooms, basically.
Yeah, and, and Jackson, you know, one classroom down, I think, that, that's actually a very good thing with the level of disparity between the...
Sheriff, that's where we were worried about when we were drawing the attendance areas, and so to get a little bit of relief there is good.
Actually, I think it's good.
Questions for Dave or for Jeff? Alright. Okay, construction update, six point three. Dave, you want to come around?
Good evening, I've prepared, uh, ten slides here for the team, and that was a pivotal point in regards to a construction update based on updated LUTs. This is the last times the team's gonna be together, and because of MEA last week, we were able to accomplish a lot of substantial items to complete along that line. Also, the thrust stage was completed when we got occupancy today, so again, another pivotal point in, in this, so that's why we thought it was a, a reason to give an update. Uh, and also, just fun to reflect on, again, remembering these renderings are three, three to four years old, how they compare to what was built, and how close they are in resemblance. And it's fun to see which one is actually the rendering versus the photograph, so. If you seen the, uh, as you're acting through the front entrance here, you can see on the left hand the rendering, on the right hand side, so things that were completed over MEA, all the landscaping was complete. The metal panel for the marquee vertical sign is complete, um, and no longer have the green and the drywall. Things left, things left on the front entrance is the sign itself, it is being held up in conditional use marks with the city right now, so we're going through the logistics of getting that approved to, in order for us to get that signed up. So that's the only outstanding item left there for the front entrance. If you wanna move to the next slide, again, one of these things is fun to see, is that, you know, really hard to tell which one is the rendering versus the photograph here. But as you enter through the vestibule here, you'll see the signage is up, again, it's, it's all done now, punchless items are taken care of within the space. So again, it's just hard to tell between the two. Next slide. Here is, if you enter through the vestibule doors here, what you're seeing is the, the canvas and shafty signage. Um, what you don't see is the, we've had some difficulties with the, what we call PIP panels, the prefabricated wood panels, in regards to manufacturing and delivering. So this is actually just a, a temp wall until we get the actual wood panels up, and then the signs are gonna go on top of that, so it'll look more like the, the rendering itself.
So the lettering is more physical?
Yes.
Once that's completed.
Yeah, but the silver and white is just not legible, if we want to put again, we wanted to look like a finished product, and we could add...
Is the panel still current, I think is what you were...
Yup, so there's got, uh, three more days to acclimate for this portion, again, we've had some issues with delivery and timing, so everything's on site now. Uh, so three days to acclimate to the weather, and then, uh, the rest of the panels will start coming up. And then this is if you were to turn around, look back at the vestibule, again, one of those renderings, like, just, it's hard to tell, even with the sunlight and the daylight shadowing on the floor. So here's a shot looking at the west entrance into the arts and communication, just outside lobby of the new theater. As you can see on the right hand side, we still have some panels, some wood panel that needs to be put up, again, it's on site now. Again, just needs acclimating, put up, so we're thinking probably a week to ten days, uh, for installation for this area, for the wall. And then, if you look at the photograph on the right hand side, you see that where the arts and communication, so your sign is, there's actually gonna be furred on, we're gonna have it look like the other academy entrances with wood as well. Those three items need to be taken care of. So here's a shot looking at the east entrance of the arts and communication wing. And inside the other room, like I mentioned earlier, we've got occupancy, uh, still have some outstanding items to be completed in the space. Got to paint the handrails, some masonry caps on some walls, and, and, uh, wood, wood finishes, but again, we got occupancy today, so we can start using that space. Just a brief touch up, again, we have some PIP panels that need to go in, if you look at the left hand side, you see where the stage is, we've got the wood covering just over the stage, that's, that still needs to be installed. They actually, we're done that today. And here's a shot of the survey, that was, uh, completed before school, and then the a la carte to the right was, uh, finished, I wanna say in late September. That is not complete, all of the glass door, glass windows, and overhead doors are in, installed. And then my last slide is within the survey itself, got the finishing touches, nice wall tile, we've been using it since day one, so just phasing the, uh, food in. So we're showing that, and then, no slide, but, uh, just going forward, we're at a point that we can say that we have about a hundred and sixty thousand left and remaining contingency to use. Again, it's gonna be, whether it's the BAC committee or facilities committee, to identify what the additional needs may be, we can go forward and prioritize those needs, and you lack those remaining funds.
So we're calling the project effectively complete with the addition of punchless items?
Yeah, exactly, we're occupied in all, all the areas now, so again, it's a turning point, and again, punchless items still need to be ongoing, and, you know, we've got a year's worth of commissioning work to do.
Sometimes punchless items could go a year, right?
Oh, yeah.
So for people then?
Yeah, so for, but people don't know is that we usually have the retained, there's a dollar value point to those punchless items, and we keep that in our finance to hold in case they don't accomplish those punchless items.
So, if you think about it, we had Bronfium, we had, uh, obviously the high school expansion, we had the south side, we have security expenses, and I feel like I'm forgetting one. Maybe I'm not, but the point is, that massive project, we were essentially saying, we're done, other than the punchless, et cetera, and we're ending in black, by a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
A hundred and sixty thousand.
And that's after having the two million that we know got reality. So other words, we'd be ending two point one six to the good, which is a credit to ICS and Wolf, and that's, you guys need to be recognized and thanked and appreciated, that's why you're here. You've been great partners in the past, you've been great partners to this project, we're ending in the black, we're essentially, essentially ending on time, yeah, there's a few little things to do that, that we obviously would like to plan to. And it's just been phenomenal work by you guys and everyone that you represent, so, uh, I wanna thank you, and a bit of having sat on BAC for the past, good lord, two and a half, three years, whatever it's been now. Um, meeting every couple weeks, you guys have been phenomenal, and I can't end that enough, to end this project, even with some of the cards we pulled off the table, uh, in the black is just simply amazing, and the work is phenomenal. So, I wanna thank you guys, and make sure that you take that back to, to your own, I, I wanna thank you guys. Any other questions or comments?
I would have to say that, kind of to Reggie's point, to experience the kinds of dialogue that we had over, uh, the last two and a half years of BAC meetings, you know? I remember when BAC was originally, um, sort of positioned, well, we're gonna talk about soil board, and it was things really exciting like that. And, um, we have talked about those things as well, as, I don't even know how many other items, and we've had some good days. We've had some days where we've had spirited, uh, discussion about, um, priorities, and at the end of the day, everybody was professional, and everybody, uh, ultimately had their eye specs, including administration on what was best for Shockville students. Um, and we, we went across the board, so, yeah, to Reggie's point, again, thank you for your, your collaboration, it has been a... If anybody gets a chance to go through this, which I don't know that the Shockville wants to go through it again anytime soon, uh, this was a significant undertaking, you know, multiple projects happening at the same time. Um, and the fact that you guys are able to, um, keep tabs on everything, even some of the nits and nats that we just take for granted because we, we tune into this every couple of weeks, um, you've always been there for us and provided the updates. Also recognize that our south side is not done yet, that's technically part of the project, uh, so we're not saying BAC's closed out, but we're, you know, for all intents and purposes, uh, saying the core structure is done, so, yeah. Thanks a lot, guys, it's been a great experience.
A pleasure.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you.
You still have to come back every once in a while. Alright. Let's not, let's move on to, uh, speaking of closure, I have a seven point three, for the second readings, gone?
Yeah, so, this is picking up on the first reading, and, uh, most likely, I wanna say, of the policies, I will, I'll just throw them off. Um, I also have to note in front of you that you all have an import book packet, I sent that to you guys as an update, probably you've already read it, but for the benefit of anyone paying attention, there's a long list of policies that we reviewed. I'm gonna highlight a few that we pulled, uh, and a few that we were recommending, we actually not approved, and why, so again, if you have any additional comments, please let me know. Um, you could supply comments along the way, I got some comments from Dave, from your administration, from your firm incorporated. But effectively, the ones that aren't listed are the ones we are moving, we're recommending adopt as revised, there really were no additional wording changes that the committee felt was appropriate, that you guys commented on, that administration commented on. So, one oh two on your agenda, one oh two to nine oh three, we're basically accepting as its, meaning with the red line, you see. A lot of those changes, I'm gonna highlight those again, a lot of them are just statutory changes, things you don't have a choice on, sometimes it's just a statutory language update, et cetera, so those are straightforward. We had a couple that we had sent out as a first reading, seven twenty-two, and a form that had come through there relative to public data requests, we already had a process in place. Um, we just wanna make sure that what we're doing and, and in line with the, uh, policy that now MSBA's come out with is consistent, so we've actually pulled that one, just to kinda make sure that we're all copacetic with that. I don't anticipate any issues, but that's why that one was pulled. Five thirty-three, or excuse me, yeah, five thirty-three and five thirty-four, on wellness and unpaid yield changes, we consciously pulled those, we knew that last time, because they, in the wisdom of the state, uh, have imposed significant, uh, requirements on the district. And before we adopt that, we wanna make sure that we know what we're adopting, and that we're willing to accept those responsibilities, if you don't wanna have a policy by it. We will do this, they're mandatory, but we have to have, uh, we just need to make sure that we're comfortable with this, so administration is still working on those, and we'll bring those back, okay, so that's why those two are pulled. Changing gears, there are two policies that, uh, were brought forward by MSBA that are policies that have been existing for a long time, nine oh six and nine oh seven. Um, nine oh six is about notification of predatory offenders, and we, as a committee, maybe it was termination, then we recommended that the board not adopt that, it's not mandatory, it's not what we have to do. But before we take that action, we asked administration to go off and meet with the Shockville Police Department to find out what they currently do, and whether or not they recommend that we adopt this policy. And I wanna thank they, on behalf of whoever did the light work, uh, met with and talked with the Shockville Police Department, they have a procedure in place that they have to follow, and they recommend that we not do this. We don't need to do this belt suspenders, and frankly, require us to take actions that, I don't, if we wanna get in the business of being responsible for those notifications. So a recommendation on nine oh six is not to adopt it, prior boards for years have not adopted it, so this is a continuation of that, right, Sheriff? And then finally, nine oh seven, I think we talked about this last time, we were also recommending we not do it, this is the one where if the, the district ever wanted to offer a reward for information, let's say it's on vandalism or, or something like that, um, you have to have a policy in place that allows you to do that. We're choosing not to adopt that policy, it's not, we're recommending we don't adopt this policy, you can easily do so, if you... You can easily do so in the future if we ever needed to do that. Prior boards have not adopted it. It's not mandatory. So we're just feel like it's probably something as a policy we're saying, or a policy committee, we don't think we want to be in the business of using taxpayer funds for that purpose as a general rule. If we ever change our minds, we can. So that's really the only policies to talk about. I think you knew all this from the memo. If you have any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, we're adopting 102 to 903 as proposed by MSBA. Is that a fair summary from the committee?
Yes.
Any questions?
So question on language for the recommended actions there. Should it actually read something to the effect of accept the speed gesture policies from the second reading as presented?
Yes, yes, please.
So if there's no other question, I will make that motion to adopt 102 through 903 as listed, as proposed, making a conscious decision as to what's not on that list and what's in it.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Rich, thanks, policy committee. And 7.4, we are going to go ahead and postpone that to a future meeting. So that ends the, that's section, so it's section eight, new business discussion. We do not have any new business discussion items. We do not have any new business option items. So go with the, let's see, other. Sarah, you got any others? No? Nancy, you got an other? Pete? Yep. Anything else? Bob?
Okay.
All right. A lot of committee reports. Judy, any updates? Okay, Rich?
I don't know, Nancy, if you wanted to say anything about the district advisory council that night? Was it in competition with the superintendent?
Yeah, so our district advisory group met for the first time this year. They typically meet three to four times a year depending on what are the issues that we want to work on. And so at that meeting, which happened at the same time as yours last meeting, we basically discussed with them some of the results of the work we do around world's best workforce legislation and some of our achievements and some goals that we need from that. And the second part was really looking at an issue that has been a piece that we need to kind of do a better job on when it comes to the world's best workforce legislation, which is a lot of the work we do with this group. And that's on family engagement. So we did quite a bit of brainstorming with that group about how we could do that in multiple areas across the district. So they're always very helpful. They gave us really good feedback and ideas for us to take. And we're going to build upon that to our next meeting, which is in December, when they also look at things like course proposals and pieces like that.
Scott, can I take my opportunity back? Of course.
I want to first of all, finish with Nancy. The committee is comprised mostly of parent volunteers and school personnel. We have a couple of combo parent teachers who like to sit on the committee because they have kids in the school, but they also help represent Sam. And then we have two administrators, one from elementary and then one from secondary. And then bulk of the group is community and parents.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to mention on behalf of the high school, you know, we talked already about closing the project, but I wanted to give a special thanks to Eklip on behalf of the high school and then also for teach-in learning. As we went through all of the details and down to the end, Eklip and Gabe and some of the others that were here, every single day, Phillips, that were here every single day, putting in very long hours on a very tight timeline. I just want to give a special thank you to them. And trying to be prepared when we had 200-plus employees who are all thinking about getting their classroom ready and coming in at one time and managing that. He did an amazing job and it was a very stressful time. And I just want to give a thank you to him.
Very welcome, sir.
You're all very fond of him here. I think we'll keep him.
Is this a pre-throw already now?
Yes.
Open mic. I do think that the, or should we kept apprised of the cold days, the connected learning days. And then on that day where the high school, a bunch of their staff went to the academy champions, the other half of the day was working on what those connected learning day activities would look like. And I think they made very good progress and will be ready if we needed that. But also just recall that we have a little bit of a buffer. We're using this as learning. But I just think it's something that whether we do it or we don't, we're going to hear about it. And so I think good progress was made at both the elementary and the secondary. So really good use of that PD day as well and across the board.
Let's see here. We've already talked about finance. BAC has been canceled on account of we're running out of things to talk about, which is a good thing. I would ask Jeff, if you could let us know when the next Citizens Financial Advisory Committee meeting is going to be. It's good for somebody who's interested in getting that going again. If you find your idea, we appreciate it. Otherwise, Tony?
I do have something for you. I attended the Southwest Metro School Board meeting last week. And I wanted to share with you, they are working on this 2019 legislative proposals. And there are some, they've been working with some of the districts on some different needs that they need. And they wanted us as school board members to look at it. And I know a lot of you like policies and like to nitpick on grammar and stuff like that. So, you know, just have to watch this back. But there's some really good stuff in here. One of them is about having teachers making choices when the fire alarm goes off based off of the last shooting, some shootings that have happened where the fire alarm went off and everybody darted out and that's when the shire actually went off. Also, a need was some pregnant teens being transported from New Prague, I believe, to Chaska. And the state caught up to that. They actually ding them for that because they're not actually part of that particular program. So there's another draft in here. So I just wanted to let you know that, I'm going to give this to Sarah. I think Dave's already seen this, haven't you? Oh, you have it. I'm going to give this to Sarah so she can email you. And they were really quick, they've already added Mike on here. So, and that was, we proved it Monday and this was Tuesday. So they, so just wanted to let you know. So you can send your feedback to me if you'd like. And if you have any questions on any of these and we've talked about them in our board meetings, I can give you some background too. So that's all I got.
So these proposals that they're preparing for on behalf of themselves, on behalf of the...
On behalf of Southwest Metro and the MSBA is working with them as well. And once they've created the right, the perfect draft, they're going to want, and if they get approved, of course, they're going to want all 11 districts to sign off on the disapproval. Yeah. So I don't want to be the only one making that choice.
Well, as was alluded to earlier, election day is coming up in a few weeks. And I'd like to wish good luck to all of the 10 candidates who took the courageous step filing for auction, or for office. For office, it is a courageous step and it's a surreal experience to walk in the voting booth and have the opportunity to vote for yourself. I encourage you to all do that. But no, I'm excited by this and we will find out what our board looks like going forward by probably late at night on the 6th. Typically, it's 10:30, 11 o'clock before we strike the results. Am I remembering that correctly?
They got it a little bit.
So, yeah, just want to wish everybody luck and for everybody to vote.
I want to ask you right now, if you know, Sarah, when is it we have to accept the results? Will that be the first meeting in November?
That's where you see, the November 13th meeting is kind of unique. It's a Tuesday. So first of all, November 12th is Veterans Day, so you can't hold a, can't hold a meeting that evening. So the stayaway from the canvassing window bumped over just one day, so we moved to it Tuesday, November 13th. And that, that's the day we will have the information from the state county overhand to the election results.
And if that, that's when Scott and Tony become lame ducks. Just circle that one.
Thanks, Scott.
Well, now you're just lame.
All right, we'll move on to number 12, recognition of visitors to the board meeting. Any one of you recognized? I like the recognition one. Please crowd. All right, item 13, up on the big screen. You can see the date, so that's huge print. Wow, that's awesome. Okay, move on to item 14, standing motion, Georgia.
Actually, we've made BAC into once a month, so it isn't one, maybe you don't know this.
I don't know.
Right? 28th, 28th?
28th is true.
28th is gone or 28th stays? 28th is removed, right? Yeah, because that was, because that was what we didn't want to discern over that.
Good call, good call.
28th is true.
Yeah, yeah, 28th.
All right. Now, I want to make a motion, Georgia.
I will make that motion because it's crazy.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Close, same side, which carries here.